It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. I will call this meeting of the Miami Township Montgomery County Board of Trustees to order. If everybody could please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Posey?
Here.
Mr. Culp?
Here.
Reading of casualties, Mr. Posey, military casualties.
We have quite a few this time. Marine Corps Staff Sergeant Darren T. Hoover participating in Operation Freedom Sentinel. Marine Corps Sergeant Johnny Rosario Picardo participating in Operation Freedom Sentinel. Marine Corps Sergeant Nicole L. G. participating in Operation Freedom Sentinel. Marine Corps Corporal Hunter Lopez participating in Operation Freedom Sentinel. Marine Corps Corporal Gajen W. Page participating in Operation Freedom Sentinel. Marine Corps Corporal Humberto A. Sanchez participating in Operation Freedom Sentinel. Marine Corps Lance Corporal David L. Espinoza participating in Operation Freedom Sentinel. Marine Corps Lance Corporal Jared M. Schmitz participating in Operation Freedom Sentinel. Marine Corps Lance Corporal Riley J. McCullum participating in Operation Freedom Sentinel. Marine Corps Lance Corporal Dylan R. Marola participating in Operation Freedom Sentinel. Marine Corps Lance Corporal Kareem M. Nakui participating in Operation Freedom Sentinel. Navy Hospitalman Maxton W. Soviak participating in Operation Freedom Sentinel. Army Staff Sergeant Ryan C. Naus participating in Operation Freedom Sentinel.
Thank you. Chief Stegelmeyer, first responders.
Good evening, Board. The following is a first responder casualty for the period of August 17th through September the 7th, 2021. Police Officer Jason Ranor, Daytona Beach Police Department, Florida, end of watch August 17th, 2021. Trooper James J. Mundah, New York State Police, New York, end of watch August 22nd, 2021. Firefighter Ruiz Carapia, the GE Forestry Division, end of watch August 23rd, 2021. Firefighter Judy Spencer, Heartland Volunteer Fire Department, end of watch August 24th, 2021. Police Officer Herminder Gurle, Galt Police Department, California, end of watch August 26th, 2021. K-9 Axel, Kent County Sheriff's Office, Michigan, end of watch August 28th, 2021. K-9 Duke, Virginia State Police, Virginia, end of watch August 30th, 2021. And Sergeant Brian Mole, Connecticut State Police, Connecticut, end of watch September 2nd, 2021.
If everyone could please join me in recognizing amendment of silence. We have no guests and/or scheduled presentations. As we get started, I will apologize to those here in our audience. It was a little warm in the room today. And I'll also pre-apologize. My allergy medicine is wearing off, so I may need to sneeze. I have my rags. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. McCord, new business, you have Resolution 63, 2021.
Yes, sir. It's a motion, it's a resolution to approve proxy training for public records for staff members on behalf of the members of the trustees and fiscal officer. We're going to an annual process where we update our training on public records requirements and we go ahead and make sure that we've got it covered for the elected officials as well.
Any questions for Mr. McCord on Resolution 63? Mr. McCord, you have Resolution 64.
Resolution 64 is to authorize the township administrator to sign an agreement for an IT information technology and cybersecurity capability assessment and audit to take a look at our current capabilities and our vulnerabilities in the, with the idea of building out a multi-year roadmap to improve our technology security and make sure that we're ready to handle anything that's thrown at us in the next few years from a technology perspective. We've been adding a lot to the network in the last year and we feel like we need to kind of take a step back and look at it from an independent perspective. So there's a local company that has provided a statement of work and we feel like it's a good move for us to get a baseline of where we are and where we need to go.
Any questions on 64? Mr. McCord, Resolution 65.
Resolution 65 is an amendment to the appropriation of funds for 2021 specifically to cover some police expenses and some unexpected legal expenses. It's more of a timing issue on revenues and collections that were slated to come in into one fund that haven't arrived yet from the federal government for some seizure activity that the police department has been involved in over the last several years. So we're going to shift the expenses that are coming up as a part of the Kettering Dispatch and some other capital items. We're going to switch them to some other funds and when the revenues come in, we'll just replenish. They're all coming out of seizure funds. It's just state versus federal. I believe included in your packet was a memo, a cover memo, kind of explaining the ins and outs of what we were proposing. Worked with Chiefs Stegelmeyer to come up with the details and to get us through to the end of the year.
Any questions for Mr. McCord on Resolution 65? Mr. McCord, you have Resolution 70.
Yes, the last, this last one is for the township administrator to execute a new electricity generation agreement with IGS Energy Incorporated, our current electricity generator provider. They came to us a couple of months ago with a proposal to extend, we have two years remaining on our current contract. They came forth with a proposal to lower our immediate kilowatt hour generation charge and if with the, we would extend it for two more years, yeah, for a total of 63 months through December of 2026. Got the rate information this morning. The rates have been kind of bouncing around a little bit, but they did get the rate this morning and I believe that the final total was point four, 4.95 cents per kilowatt hour. We're right now at 5.2 cents per kilowatt, so it will be an immediate savings over the next five years.
So did I read your analysis of this correctly, that the total projected savings over five years would amount to something around $9,800?
That is correct. Based on our current usage, if we don't, if we eliminate any of the projects to reduce our kilowatt usage, we would, we would, we project savings of around $9,800, yes.
And did we solicit any other bids for a five-year agreement?
Mel King, our facilities manager, did some comparison with the PUCO website, the comparison tool, and was not able to find anything below 50, uh, 5 cents a kilowatt hour comparable for our usage rates. We did look at not including all of our locations and it actually was that some of our lower usage locations, like the traffic signals and some of the public utility, public streetlights, actually helped us get a better rate. So we felt like we had exhausted all the possibilities of current options at this point.
And so we're currently in an agreement for 5.2 cents a kilowatt hour through 2023 and this is essentially an extension through 2026, but it changes all the years to 4.9 cents?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. McCord on Resolution 70? All right, hearing none, I will move on to the public comment period. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to come forward and give a statement to the Board of Trustees? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period, move into consideration of votes and resolutions. I will make a motion to approve Resolution 63-2021, a resolution to appoint designees to the, attend the public records training on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the fiscal officer. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey, or I'm sorry, Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 64, 2021, a resolution to authorize an agreement for the assessment of information technology and cybersecurity capabilities. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I think this is an excellent baseline opportunity to make sure that the township is as secure as possible. While almost everything we have is a public record, there is, the functioning of computer systems on a daily basis is based off of making sure we're not hacked or ransomware or any of the other things that are pillaging through businesses these days and avoiding every opportunity for someone who would wish us harm to be able to do it is, I'm in favor of.
Yeah, I would reiterate those thoughts. I mean, we hear almost on a daily or weekly basis of communities that are, their entire systems are locked up and shut down. Cyber hackers are everywhere these days, so we need to be as secure as possible with our records and our operations to maintain our capabilities. Any further discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 65, 2021, a resolution to approve amendments to the appropriation of funds for 2021. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
To mix it up, I'll make a resolution, a motion to approve Resolution 70-2021, a resolution to authorize the township administrator to execute an electricity generation agreement for township facilities.
I'll second the motion.
So for discussion, I would, I would share that I do not favor this resolution at this time. I think less than $10,000 of savings to lock us into a five-year agreement simply just isn't enough to justify an extension of agreement that we're already in for the next two years. It would be my recommendation that we vote this down and analyze the market over the next couple of years. I think aggregation, the opportunity to partner with other committees, the American Rescue Plan allows us to make investments into clean energy projects. I just don't know what we're going to want to do in the next five years. I wouldn't want to lock us into an agreement.
It's been my understanding that these rates are at historic lows now and not likely to be able to be projected lower for the purposes of, you're at a cost floor with regards to production costs, but I am in favor of lengthening the contract at the present rate proposed.
My only reply to that was, we've had historic lows almost every year for the last 10 years in electricity and gas, so it just keeps seemingly going down. I don't think the move from 5.2 to 4.9 is worthy, but I respect your thoughts.
Mr. Morris?
No.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
The resolution passes. We will now move into public hearings. I will make a motion to open public hearing for zoning case 66-2021. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Okay, sorry, the zoning case is 31999, not 662021. So I will change that for the record. Zoning case 319.99 is now open. Following will be the order in which this will proceed. Staff will give a report, applicant will give a presentation. All proponents, those in favor, will be given an opportunity to speak. All opponents, those opposed, will be given an opportunity to speak. A time limit of three minutes will be placed on each of the speakers. If you come forward, give your name and address for the record. The board will close the public hearing prior to taking any final action. We'll now hear from the staff. Mr. Carlson, have the legal requirements of this meeting been met?
The legal requirements have been met.
Do you have a recommendation from the townings zoning commission? Will you please review your report at this time?
I do have a recommendation from the zoning commission. I'd be happy to review. Our first case is EC 319-99. It's a request for a plan development regulation amendment to the existing Wellington Plan Development for the purposes of constructing an accessory carriage house specifically to be located in the side yard. The Wellington Plan Development is an existing PD2 zone plan development off of Alex Bell Road, Alexander'sville, Bell Brook Road. The plan development consists of two parcels. One is a single-family residence to be called the Overstreet property. The family that owns the property are the Overstreets. And the parcel to the west is the Wellington and Dayton, a senior living facility. Here's an area photo shown from Alex Bell Road of the Overstreet building looking south. See, there is a fence along Alex Bell with the driveway that leads back to the single-family residence. Proposed structure is a 3,600 square foot accessory garage that is called a carriage house, is built in the style of a carriage house, and the designers intended it to match the exterior of the existing single-family residence. Currently, the plan development is subject to Article 38. This is the standard accessory structure, accessory use article of the township zoning resolution. This regulates all accessory structures on almost all properties in the township. And Article 38 typically requires all accessory structures be placed in the rear yard, so that is the cause for coming forward for a modification to the specific standards for this plan development. The applicant feels that there are a number of circumstances that warrant a modification to the plan development, namely a topographical error or issue to the south side of the existing home. So if the red dot on the right side of that topographical map, if that were to be relocated in the rear yard, the length that the garage would span represents a 10-foot differential in grade. So by moving it forward, they've reduced that to around two and a half foot grade difference. So they are requesting location in the side yard. There are other accessory structures to the west side behind the house that would prevent it from being placed to the west of the rear yard. So specifically, the language for the proposed amendment would allow for one accessory structure on this parcel built in the style of a carriage house, consistent with the design of the Overstreet building in terms of materials and architecture, but otherwise must meet the requirements of Article 38 beyond being located in the side yard. Some site concerns came up in discussion with the applicant. There is a fence located along Alex Bell Road. The fence was an existing fence built quite a while back. We don't know the exact date that that fence was built, but it was reconstructed in 2018 and at that time it did not, was not, did not apply for, was not issued a zoning certificate. So with that said, the fence is located in the public right of way. It is along Alex Bell, not located on the property currently. This certainly would have been caught if they had applied for a zoning certificate. And the zoning commission has recommended that that fence be pulled back onto the property and be issued a zoning certificate as is standard in this situation. The applicant went and got a survey done just to confirm the location of the fence related to the property line. You can see here the red line is the property line. The fence is located just to the north of that. The blue line to the south, we just wanted to be clear that to be able to issue a zoning certificate under the existing standards, a fence must meet the front yard setback in addition to any additional distance shown on the Montgomery County Thoroughfare Plan. So currently, Alex Bell Road, you can kind of see on the east side notches back to the property to the east. So the right of way comes further to the south than for this property in particular. So under our code, the fence would not have to only be built at the red property line, but further back to the blue line showing the location that Alexander'sville, Bell Brook Road, or Pike could be expanded to according to the Thoroughfare Plan. So again, with that, the zoning commission recommended approval with a stipulation that a zoning certificate be issued for all fencing on parcel K47, 02403, 0018, prior to the issuance of zoning certificate for an additional accessory structure. In this case, would be the carriage house. If the board has any additional questions at this time, I'd be happy to discuss.
Any questions for Mr. Carlson? Is the applicant here in which to come forward? Anyone wishing to come forward in favor of this plan and give proponent testimony? Anyone here would like to give opponent testimony? Seeing none, I will make a motion to close the public hearing for zoning case 319-99. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
I will make a motion to approve zoning case 319-99 and uphold the zoning commission recommendation. Is there a second?
I believe it's adopt the zoning commission recommendation.
All right, we will adopt their recommendation.
Subject to that modification, I will second.
Yeah, and that is the Resolution 66-2021, a resolution to adopt a plan development regulation amendment for the Wellington Plan Development under zoning case 319-99 for land zone PD2. Mr. Posey, a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
I will now make a motion to open the public hearing for zoning case 434-18. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Zoning case 434-18 is now open. The following will be the order which this hearing will proceed. Staff will give a report. The applicant will be given an opportunity for a presentation. All proponents will be given an opportunity to speak. All opponents will be given an opportunity to speak. A time limit of three minutes will be placed on each of the speakers. When you come forward, please give your name and address for the record. The board will close the public hearing prior to taking any final action. Mr. Carlson, have the legal requirements for this hearing been met?
Yes, sir. The legal requirements have been met.
Do you have a recommendation for the Miami Township Zoning Commission? Would you prepare that and review that report at this time?
I do have a recommendation. I'd be happy to share my report. So that's the second case tonight, ZC 434-18, is a final development plan request for expansion to the existing Connor Group hangar. Property context, the hangar is located just south of the existing Connor Group office building located at the corner of Austin Boulevard and Springboro Pike. The property is zone PD5, is a planned mixed-use development in the airport plan development. There's an area photo looking east from Springboro Pike at the existing Connor Group hangar on the west, on the left, sorry, pardon me, and then another storage building located south of the building, shown on the right side of the image. As a reminder, in June of this year, the Connor Group applied for and was approved, a PDRA Plan Development Regulation Amendment to the existing development standards to allow alternative architectural styles to be considered by the zoning commission. In this case in particular, the existing Connor Group hangar was built before the property was zoned in EPD5, is built in the AP zoning district. It was not subject to the same building design standards, so they requested modification to be able to build an expansion that would be architecturally consistent with the existing hangar. For the site, it's over 16,000 square foot expansion of the existing hangar. It's a 43-foot tall hangar. They're proposing an additional 12 parking spaces to add to the 10 serving this existing hangar. Only two new spaces are required. There's a very small amount of parking required for what is essentially warehousing in the case of a airport hangar, and no additional access points to the site are proposed. The applicant has provided a landscape plan that meets the required tree counts and required tree placement locations. The applicant's provided a screening plan that shows rooftop mechanicals that are concealed from the roadway. The building ledge comes up higher, looking at a side view of the enclosure fans. They're two feet below the edge of the parapet. Again, the building elevations are certainly what the zoning commission determined was architecturally alternative but acceptable. Again, not meeting Article 7 as would otherwise be required. Some of the only concerns that the zoning commission had and had made a stipulation based around was the originally submitted lighting plan. The originally submitted lighting plan proposed no new site lighting, no pole lighting, only wall packs or other under parapet lighting. The lighting in this case was designed to be consistent with the existing lighting on the existing hangar. And again, this lighting was not built to be consistent with Article 7 as they are currently required to show their lighting. So the wall packs were set at a brightness of 5,000 Kelvin, 3,000 is the maximum permitted, and surface lights were set at 4,000 Kelvin. Again, 3,000 Kelvin is the maximum permitted. The zoning commission recommended that an updated lighting plan be prepared that met all requirements of Article 7. The only stipulation to that was the applicant cited some security concerns to the south and east of the building above exterior doorways where they requested 5,000 Kelvin, a cooler light temperature above those doors. The development standards specifically permit some variation in color temperature based on security concerns. So again, the zoning commission at least allowed them to prepare a plan that would show what they're specifically proposing. So here's a breakdown of sort of the different areas on the lighting plan. So the yellow in the bottom-left corner, that is existing lighting that does not currently meet our standards. The yellow circles in the upper-left, the same thing. The green area is new lighting that would meet our standards. And then the red areas are new lighting that do not meet the standards. So yeah, there's consideration given by the zoning commission for security concerns for those lighting fixtures to the south and to the east. Again, they, they updated the lighting plan to show the lighting in the green area that met the standards. However, the lighting that would neighbor the new lights would be inconsistent. So some consideration, some consideration may be given to bring some consistency to that lighting in particular. So again, zoning commission recommended approval, 3 to 0 vote with the stipulation that the applicant may provide a lighting plan that proposed the lighting brightness and temperature exceptions for the building's security concerns that they had. So if the board has any questions at this point, I would be happy to discuss. Otherwise, the applicant can certainly address some of their building security concerns and discuss those items with you as well.
Any questions for Mr. Carlson?
Yeah, so you and I discussed this earlier today regarding the lighting out front and how we, at least I would like that to be brought into conformance with our expectations out front because that's along 741.
Sure.
Did you have any other conversations about that?
Yeah, so I spoke with the applicant, made them aware that, you know, there was a desire to bring some consistency to the frontage of the building, certainly for consistent appearance, but also, of course, just to meet our standards in that area that is visible from 741. I believe that they are willing to discuss that at this point, so certainly would have the applicant address that as well.
Any other questions for Mr. Carlson? All right, thank you, sir. Is anyone here on behalf of the applicant? Would you like to come forward, sir?
Sure.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm John Goldenzoff, I'm with Moody Knoll Architects at 300 Spruce Street, Suite 300 in Columbus, Ohio, 43215. Not sure exactly what to say, and we certainly would be willing to look at matching those up and getting the new lighting to conform to, well, I know the old, the existing lighting is, is brighter than, than the existing code, so to get to replace those lights to conform with the new lighting, I'm sure our client would be willing to look at that. It'd be nice, too, to have that consistently across the front. I would think they would want it all to look the same, so I'll just have to, I'll have to get back with a client, which we just met today, we'll meet again in a few weeks, and I can get back with our engineers and try and sort out how we can get the existing fixtures replaced to match the, the new. And I guess the lights on the back, they're a little bit brighter, you know, it is an airport, they do have expensive equipment here, they've got jet fuel out front, you know, where those lights face the runway and the taxiway, there is jet fuel out there, so there are some security concerns for everybody concerned. I would, I would think maybe there'd be some, you know, some leniency there. If not, you know, I'm sure they'd be willing to discuss that, too, but that's, that's where the concerns are, is that there's a lot of, a lot of expensive stuff and a lot of flammable stuff, and it's just kind of best to make sure it's well-lit and keep, keep people from milling around there at night. Other than that, I mean, I, we appreciate the consideration, you know, the architectural appearance, we really tried just to match what we already had, so that it, you know, I know it's, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's an exception to, for this new type of architecture, but the existing's already there. We didn't try and do something totally new. We tried to match it the best we could and try and make it all look like it was there from day one, so that was, that was the intent to, and to match the headquarters as well. So other than that, I don't think I have any other comments.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone wishing to come forward in favor of this plan to give proponent testimony? Is there anyone here that would like to come forward to give opponent testimony against the plan? Seeing no further, I will make a motion to close the public hearing for zoning case 434-18. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make that stipulation that they...
I think we're just closing the...
I think we're just closing the...
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Thanks.
You're the referee here.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
And I'd like to make that stipulation that we approve this with regard, after they, or with the requirement that they fix the lighting to be consistent along the front of the building.
And in compliance with our...
In compliance with the code, yeah. I'm not concerned about the security lighting. I mean, that's fine, but...
Okay, I will, any comments from you, Mr. Morris?
No.
I was going to make a motion that we approve a final development pursuant to, let me start at the beginning. I would make a motion that we approve Resolution sixty-seven twenty-two-one, a resolution to adopt a final development plan for Area One of the Airport Plan Development under zoning case number four-three-four-dash-one-eight for land zoned PD five, planned mixed-use district. Therefore, be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees approves a final development plan for Area One in the Airport Plan Development under zoning case number four-three-four-dash-one-eight and adopts the zoning commission recommendation, subject to the stipulation that the area of the property facing State Route seven forty-one have lighting in conformance with the current zoning code.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
I will make a motion to open the public hearing for zoning case four-four-eight-dash-twenty-two-one. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Zoning case four-four-eight-dash-two-one is now open. The following will be the order in which the hearing will proceed. Staff will give a report. All those in favor, proponents will be given an opportunity to speak. All opponents will give an opportunity to speak. A time limit of three minutes will be placed on each of the speakers. When you come forward, please give your name and address for the record. The board will close the public hearing prior to taking any final action. We will now hear the report of the staff. Mr. Carlson, have the legal reports for this hearing been met?
Yes, sir. The legal requirements have been met.
Do you have a recommendation for the Miami Township Zoning Commission that you could review at this time?
I do have a recommendation. I'd be happy to share my report. Final case is a text amendment to Articles two and twenty-three as a proposed modification with the intent to clarify that self-storage or mini-storage facilities are specifically a permitted use in the Light Industrial District and then to go on and define self-storage. So here's a legislative summary. The board has been provided with a full draft of both updated code sections. They are not much more substantial than what is shown here on the screen. There's a trend nationally, certainly as retail centers are redeveloping, that in instances where they are able, there has been a placement of self-storage facilities within malls or other shopping centers. Miami Township has historically considered self-storage or mini-storage facilities an industrial-type use rather than placing them in the center of retail environments. Storage was already a listed use in the industrial district, but to clarify that this use type of self-storage or mini-storage as a permitted use, this draft would show that placed in Article twenty-three, the I-one zoning district. And again, further, would define self-storage or mini-storage as use of a site for individual property storage. Self-storage establishments provide secure indoor or outdoor space where clients can store and retrieve their goods. Zoning commission recommended approval without any stipulations of these proposed amendments. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to discuss.
Yeah, are we creating any non-conforming uses by virtue of this zoning amendment?
No. Historically, we have, for example, across the street, we have a self-storage that's in a PD four industrial district. We have self-storage that is in industrial properties on the east side, so at this point, I don't believe that there are any non-conformities being created here.
Any further questions for Mr. Carlson? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, board.
Is there anyone here in favor of this plan that would like to give testimony? Is there anyone here opposed to this plan that would like to give testimony? I will make a motion to close the public hearing for zoning case four-four-eight-dash-twenty-one. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution sixty-eight-dash-twenty-two-one, a resolution to adopt a text amendment to the Miami Township zoning resolution. Therefore, be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees adopts the text amendment to the Miami Township zoning resolution under zoning case four-four-eight-dash-twenty-two-one and approves the zoning commission recommendation, or approves and adopts, whichever of those words mean.
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Now, moving on to case or Resolution zero-six-nine-dash-twenty-two-one, I will make a motion to open the public hearing for the designated outdoor refreshment area, also known as a DORA, at Austin Landing.
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
The public hearing for the DORA at Austin Landing is now open. The following will be the order in which the hearing will proceed. Staff will give a report on behalf of the fiscal officer. Any proponents or opponents will be given an opportunity to speak. The board will close the public hearing and make a motion on the resolution concerning the creation of a DORA at Austin Landing and the establishment of, an establishment of public health and safety standards. The board will now hear the report of the staff. Mr. Snyder, have all the legal requirements of this hearing been met?
Yes, they have.
Would you please present your report at this time?
All right. Good evening, board. This is the public hearing for the application that was filed to create a designated outdoor refreshment area at Austin Landing. This application was filed by fiscal officer for Miami Township, but was prepared in conjunction with the management of Austin Landing as well as Miami Township staff and the Miami Township Police Department. So you have quite a bit of information in your packets. We tried to provide you with a memo that kind of breaks down the basic requirements of designated outdoor refreshment areas in terms of the notification, hearing period that we have to abide by, as well as the items that are required to be in the application. Those include a map or survey of the proposed area, general statement of the nature and types of establishments that will be located within the area, a statement that the proposed outdoor refreshment area will not encompass fewer than four qualified permit holders, as well as evidence that the use of the land proposed within the outdoor refreshment area are in accord with the master zoning plan, and then the proposed requirements for the purpose of ensuring public health and safety within the proposed outdoor refreshment area. So you are being asked tonight to consider both the creation of an outdoor refreshment area within Austin Landing. That area is shown on the maps that we provided, is approximately ninety-six acres in size, as well as the establishment of public health and safety measures to accompany that district if it is so created. So with that, just a quick breakdown, this would be the first DORA within the unincorporated portion of Miami Township that we have considered. The hours of operation for the DORA are proposed to be daily from four to eleven P.M. However, those hours could be modified upon approval by the township administrator in consultation with Miami Township Police Department for special events. For example, on a Saturday, you might have a special event where you wanted to run it from noon on, then it could be extended in those cases. The proposed standards are, before, you would not permit those hours to be extended, though, later into the evening, so. Again, you have within the application the current permit holders within the area that would be potentially able to utilize the DORA designation. The creation of a DORA in this area does not require each of those permit holders participate necessarily in the DORA, so they could individually choose not to provide the cups for the outdoor refreshment area. Individual retail stores within the DORA boundaries can also choose whether or not they would like to permit people to bring in refreshments that are part of the DORA into their establishments. And as you can see in the packet, there are proposed stickers, decals, that those businesses would be able to place at their doors and their entrances to designate that. So the boundaries would essentially encompass all of the currently-built area within Austin Landing, from the south side of Innovation Drive to the north side of Austin Boulevard and bounded by Springboro Pike and seventy-five on the east and west. So some of the signage that's been proposed and created is similar to signage you could see in other Doras within the state of Ohio, but these are the approximate locations that the signage would be proposed to be installed. Again, the township administrator under the proposed regulations would have the ability to modify the public health and safety plan. As we anticipate, there'll be a need to modify, adjust sign locations and things like that over time, so. Again, some of the additional signage that would state some of the regulations or standards of the DORA, as well as the window decals, and then the proposed DORA cup, which the individual businesses would purchase and then distribute to their patrons, so. And again, this is a location of restrooms, trash receptacles throughout the Austin Landing area as part of the health and safety plan. So with that, you do have, like I said, all of the information in your packets tonight. This is a public hearing to determine if there are any proponents or opponents and allow you to take that testimony, and then there is a resolution for your consideration in your packet that would both create a DORA in this area and would establish the public health and safety measures. Ultimately, there is a five-year review period in which we're required to come back and renew the DORA, but the Board of Trustees does have the ability to remove the DORA designation and dissolve the DORA at any time in between here and that five-year period, so. If the DORA were to be created tonight, the next steps would be that we would notify the Division of Liquor Control of the adoption of the DORA. Then it would be up to the Division of Liquor Control, upon receiving all the required information from us, to issue a letter to the individual permit holders with a DORA designation and indicating to them that they have now been issued that designation, and then at that point, they would be able to proceed to participate in the DORA, so. Are there any questions that I can address at this point? Otherwise, I think we do have a few people in the audience tonight to speak about this.
Yeah, can you, sorry, can you articulate the rationale for including the freestanding office buildings inside the DORA? Was that discussed at all?
It was ultimately discussed of what to include in terms of the boundaries of the DORA. I think ultimately, in consultation with the police department, it was felt that this would be a more consistent measure for the public and for the police in trying to enforce in terms of the outdoor areas that people could potentially carry an outdoor refreshment in. We do have areas that include the office areas, but we also have the hotels at the north end, the Kroger grocery store, several other facilities throughout that area where they felt if we tried to cut it into pieces and try and designate individual corridors, that that would just cause more confusion and potential headaches for the police department trying to enforce that, so. And this area overall, Austin Landing, is a bit of a self-contained development, so it was felt ultimately that that would be a more consistent way to enforce it than trying to do what some of the areas that are more enmeshed in, say, downtown or neighborhood would have to do, so.
Mr. Posey, the owners of the buildings can designate the buildings as not being welcome to have alcohol there, though it is within the DORA area. They can have the signage up that says, "You can't have alcohol in here."
I appreciate that. I just was imagining people getting drinks and saying, "Oh, this is inside the jurisdiction. I'd like to go see what's going on in these offices." But I appreciate they can certainly exclude it.
So I'm concerned with the southeast corner of Austin Landing.
Okay.
I mean, did you guys consider that there are some parts of Austin Landing that just don't lend themselves well to increased pedestrian traffic? That's a busy corner right there, right? That's where that traffic flows, trying to get through all the time. That's my perception, at least.
Southeast outside of Austin Landing, or where, like, the Home Goods store is?
So from Kohl's all the way around to BJ's.
Okay.
And there's just always a lot of congestion right there, and they're, and I'm wondering, should we be encouraging pedestrian traffic on that corner, on the outside of the ring, essentially, when there's only BJ's? I say only, but...
Well, there is the...
Nashville Hot.
Nashville Hot, yeah. Also, Chipotle does sell alcohol. I don't know how much they'll participate in the DORA, per se, but that, I can say that was all considered. It was discussed with the police department. The original designation was much more confined to the immediate park area, but ultimately, I think the discussion about which businesses to include or not to include, they felt that it was less of a confusion and potential enforcement issue to include the whole property, so.
Mr. Culp, there's also going to be an increased police presence down there for violations. Just because it's in a DORA does not allow you to become intoxicated and walk around in public. So the chief and I have discussed this issue. We found it easier to include the whole area instead of, as Mr. Snyder said, having little areas mapped out that, "Oh, wait a minute, you can't step off the sidewalk here. Now you're out of the DORA. Wait a minute, let me step back in. You're in the DORA." Just to include the area, the whole area, and make sure that we enforce all the laws that we do have in the high revised code.
So, Mr. Hess or Chief, if someone walks outside of the DORA with a DORA cup, they are then subject to open container laws?
Correct.
What is the penalty for walking around inside the DORA with a drink not in a DORA cup?
I, off the top of my head, I couldn't answer that question. However, that becomes more of a liquor violation, so that becomes, and I have to get the exact administrative action that they would have to go through, that would be handled through the Department of Labor Control and their administrative...
It'd still be an open container violation because it's not in the designated cup. It'd be no different than taking a flask, so there's a violation there.
Mr. Snyder, I just wanted to point of clarification. So if this resolution were to be passed and adopted, there's a lot of pictures of things in here that we're supposedly adopting in terms of signage, specifically in Exhibit E. Exhibit F, in your presentation, said the DORA will operate from four to eleven P.M. Exhibit E says the DORA is in operation from noon to midnight, so does that need to be corrected, or do we need to make an amendment?
That was, that's an old one. That was corrected.
That was corrected? Okay. And was DORA spelled correctly?
Yes.
Okay, my bad. I guess I got the first one that was...
Yeah.
So on Exhibit E, it has been corrected, it's four to midnight, and DORA is spelled correctly.
Four to eleven.
Yeah. Then my only other question is, has there been given any consideration to the cup itself? I like the design, I like the sign, I understand we want to make things that look pretty. The A matches the A in Austin Landing. My only concern is I participated in the Riverfest down at Miami'sburg over the weekend. It was a wonderful event. Went to the hamburger wagon, bought a couple burgers, went into Bennett's, bought a beer, they poured it in a DORA cup. I could walk out and enjoy the fireworks. Sinage was excellent. I clearly knew I couldn't step onto the bike path. It was well-designated. But the cup itself, once you pour beer in a clear cup with a couple of items that are the same color as beer, I find it troublesome that whether the police could identify whether it's a cup or not from a distance, because it just looked like a cup of beer. Is the Bennett, give any consideration on whether he put, you know, some sort of striping on the cup so it's a little more obvious to our law enforcement?
Well, all I can say is we, obviously, we've consulted with the police department. If there are changes that they would like to see, that can certainly be made, so, I mean, the designs of the cup are not set in stone with what we approved tonight, so...
Okay, so the size and the design in cup can potentially be changed?
Yes.
We're not obligated to what's in this motion?
No.
We can make it on a white cup with dark letter instead of a clear cup.
Yeah. And actually, the statute is to change effective at the end of the month, will actually allow Doras to utilize other than plastic cups. It just can't be glass. So they did make a change that will become effective at the end of the month, but...
Yeah, because I had, I did hear from the owner of an establishment in the Miami'sburg DORA. She serves coffee and tea, and she would like to serve, you know, Bailey's in her
and tea, and she would like to serve, you know, Baileys in her coffee if possible, but people don't want to drink coffee in a plastic cup. So I think we need to be amenable to all of our shop owners if they're going to be located within the DORA if it were to pass.
And again, the Board of Trustees ultimately and the township administrator can make modifications to the DORA over time as issues arise, and certainly the administrator would be able to make, you know, modifications to signage, things like that, as the needs arise, so...
Any other questions for Mr. Snyder? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here wishing to come forward in favor of the plan to give testimony? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have up to three minutes to talk.
My name is Jill Schrader. I am the GM for the Chewie's Restaurant at Austin Landing, and I agree with the DORA. In my establishment, since Governor Dewine did the alcohol, you know, for sale to go, in Chewie's, we do a designated cup with a lid and a Chewie's sticker that we do for every to-go cup. Being part of Austin Landing, we have done that for certain events, but we do that for every to-go, you know, alcoholic beverage that we sell, just for our own personal safety, the, you know, open container law and stuff like that, but I would love to see that be a part of Austin Landing, just because we've been there, you know, six years, and I've been the GM for four and a half years. I live in Springbrough, so I've seen the DORA, you know, stuff going on in Springbrough, and I think that it would be a great asset to Austin Landing, as long as it's controlled and, you know, we have the right cup and signature and, you know, maybe sticker and stuff like that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any... Anyone else in favor of the plan wishing to come forward to give testimony? Is there anyone opposed to the plan that would like to come forward and give testimony? All right, seeing none, I will make a motion to close the public hearing for the designated outdoor refreshment area, DORA at Austin Landing. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morse?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution 69-2021, a resolution authorizing the creation of a designated outdoor refreshment area, a DORA, at Austin Landing. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morse?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Thank you. Any department heads wishing to make any comments? Elected official comments. Mr. Newell?
I have none.
Mr. Culp?
I have none.
Mr. Posey?
Yeah, I have a brief one. Officer-involved shooting is not a phrase that anyone wants to hear. Sunday night, in my living room, I heard the shots fired that resulted in a township resident's death and three of our police officers' lives being changed forever. I thought they were fireworks. Miami'sburg had its river blast, and I assumed someone was continuing the show. I used the Ring app, I have a Ring camera on my front door, and on the Ring of Neighbors part, updates started to flow in about the shots involved, the SWAT team being deployed. I am glad that those of us in Miami Township don't see incidents like this very often. I wanted to express my appreciation for the officers who responded to not one, but two domestic violence calls that night involving that individual. I want to express my appreciation for officers who put themselves in harm's way so that others may be safe. I want to express my appreciation to Chief Stigelmeier and his leadership within the department. In an era sometimes lacking trust between police and citizens, I am thankful that our department uses body cameras to make sure there's no confusion about the sequence of events when officers are required to make split-second decisions. I am thankful that our department maintains its Kalia accreditation, demonstrating that it is dedicated to training and policies that are world-class. I want to express my condolences to the family of the deceased. Regardless of the circumstances, he was a member of someone's family, and while I believe in a heaven and a redemptive God, loss is felt most strongly here on earth. I want to express my sympathies to the officers involved. I am the son of a police officer who served for almost 20 years, but never had to fire his gun in the line of duty. I hope and trust that those officers are engaging professional resources as needed and will return to service when appropriate. Police work is often underappreciated and second-guessed after the fact, but when we are in danger, they are the ones who volunteered to run towards it. I am thankful for a township and administration who supports its police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. I would like to allow my comments to echo the same sentiments. I will not speak nearly as eloquently as Mr. Posey just did, but I also want to thank Chief Stigelmeier for his leadership. Wonderful job, quickly informing the public as to what was going on. We live in a day and time with social media that speculation runs rampant, and the ability for you to come forward and make good, clean statements to let the public know what had happened as quickly as you could. Police work is challenging in all aspects, and this is the worst of all types of incidents, but frequently, the police are hindered with their ability to share information because a case has to be made, evidence has to be collected, the guilty have to be presumed innocent until we can prove that case in a court of law. But Chief, you stepped up to the mic and calmed our community in a time when social media clearly wanted to hype up the event, so thank you for that. I'd also like to thank my fellow trustees and fiscal officer Newell for approving the funding that ultimately paid for those body cams. A lot of people were questioning those investments. Why do we need them? We don't have that in our community. Those devices protect our officers, and they protect our citizens, and they are very worthy of investment, and they're going to prove their worth for this... In this instance. So thank you, everyone. We have no scheduled work sessions, we have no scheduled executive sessions. I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 6:57. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We're adjourned.